Okay, board members present, well, since you're both alternates, is it you tonight, Mike? Is it your turn tonight?
Yeah, Sean was last time.
Okay, and actually David's not here either. David has resigned or no? Okay, so both of you will be regular voting members tonight. So Sean Winston, we've got Niall Shore, we've got the vice chair Paul Bouver, absent is Nicole Fecto, and Mike LaRue. We also have our planning technician here, James. There is no public comment, or there's no public here tonight, so we will not be having a public comment session. Moving on to the approval of minutes for the July 19th, 2018 meeting.
Do we have a couple of minutes?
Yes. For you, of course.
Well, I did find one thing wrong on the first page, but I'm looking more as I get further here.
I see it too. All right, what do you got?
Same what you have on the first page, I think as presented should be as amended. And then, I have a question when Patrick--
The motion to accept the minutes as amended.
But that's not a motion you're making though.
Right.
The very last page, the, I guess it's next to the last page. When Patrick Venn was our planning board person, he said your minutes should only reflect what actually happened. And this, here, it says, maybe at the end after the minutes, it could say that James Belismo thought, you know, that August 15th is a good date, but the date that was suggested was not. It looks like it's actually, I know they're italicized, but it looks like it's part of the minutes, so it's not clear. It's technical.
Yeah, we could strike that.
You could just put the word in note or something.
Yeah.
And just leave it as is, you know, just so it's not--
Yeah, just something so we know it's not really, it was not part of the proceedings.
On page three, the second paragraph, the second time you mention your name, you spelled it wrong. Last name. And then under mobile homes, the first sentence, I think you need to change it from the problem with multiple homes to the problem was multiple homes on a single lot. You know what I'm talking about here? Okay, good.
Anybody else? Okay, so, seeing no other corrections or amendments, it would be the motion would be for approval of the minutes as amended.
I'll make the, oop. I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes of August 2nd as amended.
Second?
July 19th. You're looking at--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do I have to amend my motion?
Just make your motion.
I make a motion that the, we accept the minutes of July 19th as amended.
And I'll second that.
Further discussion, all in favor? Okay.
It's five zero.
All right.
That was a tough one.
Moving on to land use ordinance amendments. So we had a number of things, if you go back to our minutes, there was a number of things in here that we asked to have changed.
I can, you can move to the projector, because I have, I have it all on the projector ready to go.
Isn't it this?
Yeah, yeah.
This is for the public, so the public can follow along with it.
And just to show the differences between the two, what's changed from last night.
You want me to pull that down?
Down.
I thought that looked Dave's job.
Is that good?
It's great. All right, so the version on the left is the older amendments, and the one on the right, obviously, are the new ones. So the first page is all the same, we're cool with that. Now, I sent out the email about the licensing and fees. And, so you can see on the left, "All fees shall be paid to the Town of Berwick and/or the Maine Department of Administrative and Financial Services." That kind of tipped me off a little bit to, we should like look at that a little bit more. And when you go back to Maine LR 2395, it specifies where the, why the cost. They're supposed to reasonably recover their administrative costs. And it doesn't really apply to Town of Berwick costs. And as a reference, if you look at Sanford's license, they're $100 a year. We were, regardless of tier.
Were these just one, one, these were just one-time fees?
Yearly fees.
These were yearly fees?
Yeah. That's just a license fee.
Right, and that license fee is what they're going to be paying to the, that other department.
Okay. Do we know what the fees are to the state, the fee structure is for the state?
That's, that's it.
That's the fee structure, okay. So they're paying that to the state?
Yeah, already. And like Sanford's license fee is $100 per year. And I, my suggestion is that, I think it's important that we have a license fee, but we probably wait until next spring to kind of flesh out--
Agree with you completely.
Yeah.
Yeah, $100 a year sometimes.
And we could also incorporate alcohol as well, and also look at other business fees or licenses we want to incorporate as the--
And Lee J. had talked about sort of a competitive proposal system. We can, I guess, do that at the same time.
A big system, yeah. Yeah, it would be a--
Rather than just a license fee, but--
Right, only a lot so many licenses, yeah.
And limit the number of licenses based on those proposals.
So that covers that. About around the same page. Instead of mobile homes on individual lots, we now have multiple manufactured homes slash mobile homes on individual lots. It's a conditional use on R1. Not allowed in CI. That doesn't restrict mobile homes in CI. I don't know if we wanted to do that even further. That'd be another row. But I guess that covers the discussions that were had at last meeting. Does that look good?
Yeah.
And then-- I can hear this one.
Shouldn't it be animal farms rather than animals' farms?
It is. So, this is the newer, newer one. And it's just, it's, it's animal farms now.
Yeah, but it says here animals' farms.
Yeah, just get rid of--
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
We're good to go.
Yes, we'll make a live change here.
There you go.
And I think that, that covers it. And then there's just some slight changes to the non-residental venture buildings on over 5,000 square feet, just limited residential. And by the way, I think we need to address this and ask some serious questions, because if you look at, in our land use ordinance, our limited residential, our resource protection, our stream protections, are less strict than the underlying zones. If you look at limited residential, the minimum, the minimum lot size is like 40,000 square feet. And the, the lot size dimensions are even less. So if it's an R3, you know, and it's in one of those other shoreline zones, they're less strict.
So you're saying if there is some kind of a limited residential zone within R3, they can get away with a smaller lot size instead of a 300 by 300 block?
Yeah, yeah.
We should have, maybe sure.
Positive, and I don't know the reason.
That's oversight.
It seems, it seems like, so if you look, look in--
Do we have any limited residential within? We do.
Yeah, I, I need to get the shoreline zone mapped in here.
But, but shoreline zone, which is like a limited residential, like, that would preclude that the strictest would be, would take over what would happen.
Is it the strictest, or is it, or is it-- No, it says-- It applies, it applies, my understanding is that it applies to whatever's in most. So if the lot's more than 50% of a certain zone, it follows that zone. Maybe I'm, maybe if you find the more strict part, because that, I vaguely can remember that statement, but... But anyways, if you look at the, the table, the lot size is less. But that's, I think that's for another day. And then odors, good, so that's, that's that. Dave, are you still good to do the presentation to the selectmen?
Tuesday?
Yep, yep. And then we'll have, I know it's a little weird, but we'll do the public hearing afterwards, and they're all cool with that.
Yeah, and I, I just asked if we could tell the Board of Selectmen that it's possible that our recommendations might change based on what comes out of the public hearing, just so they'll understand that.
So the design guidelines, I took all the wording--
Before you start, I just want to say this is a beautiful job, I want to thank you.
Oh, sure.
It's wonderfully done.
Oh, sure. Yeah, so the wording essentially is all the same. I looked at the wording and I thought it was really perfect for what we were, what we were looking for.
Yeah, I've got an issue.
Yep.
On page four, I think it is.
I'll add page numbers.
Page four on my laptop, I don't know what it is over here.
I know, no page number, it's brutal.
I'll grab them.
It's the part about parking. Do you know where that comes in?
Is it the, is it this page with the parking areas?
Well, it's, it's in this part about-- Yeah, okay, it is on page four, under, it's paragraph 11. I think this, it, the land use ordinance, I think, is clear about parking. And this uses the word "should," which suggests that we're sort of cutting back on the requirements of the land use ordinance.
Right.
So my recommendation would be, we shouldn't say anything about parking here, because I think it's going to confuse matters. I mean, I think the land use ordinance does a very good job of spelling out what we mean about parking, and by putting this in here, I think it just confuses the world.
Agreed, agreed.
And there's another little one near the top of the page that, it talks about a photo shown, but it doesn't refer to which photo we're talking about. Somewhere on the top of that same page. Yeah, under B on the top of the page, it says, although much larger than its neighbors in terms of square footage, the building shown. Now, I don't know what "shown" you're referring to, and we should just clarify. I mean, I think it's this picture over here. On large new buildings, or maybe it's the next page. But I just think we should, you know, put in note, C page, whatever it is, just so it'll be clear what we're talking about. So, thank you.
Maybe add some sort of designator to photos, so that they can be referenced. Like if somebody comes in, we can reference what photo we're talking about.
Yeah, you can number it, or put a page, or, or put a paragraph number, something, so they'll know what we're referring to.
I honestly, I didn't, I haven't read much through this, this is all language from, so Lee J.'s booklet. And all I did is I just kind of reformatted it, tried to make it--
Yeah, no, it's very good, it's, I think it's very clear, and I think it works well with the land use ordinance with that one little glitch.
Is it an issue at all that, I mean, there is a lot of repetition when you compare it with a form-based code?
Yeah, that's--
But it's just like a supporting document, I guess, design guidelines.
Yeah, I mean, my guess is, this is probably easier to work with than the land use-- I mean, you want people to go to the land use ordinance.
So they'll look at this first, probably.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this fleshes out more of what we want rather than what we're demanding.
Yeah, I think, especially with the, when you have photos like this, like, these are the types of things that I think--
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes--
Will give somebody a good idea of what the building should look like.
Right. And, and I think when we actually start doing these things, at least this is my thought, is that the design guidelines sort of helps us define that performance standard about, got to fit in with the neighborhood, I don't remember the exact words. I mean, I think that's, this defines what we think the neighborhood is. And so when we're looking at proposals and projects, we can point to this and say, he either does or does not fit in with the neighborhood.
And again, we are clear the applicability is only for the Village Ovalay district.
Oh, absolutely, yes, absolutely. Yeah, at least for now, whether we want to make it something else later on, we can decide, but for now, absolutely.
The planning board's favorite McDonald's and Freeport.
Absolutely.
I always got a--
It's going to be the Bouver-- Building.
So James, why did you put that in there?
Why not?
I mean, I stalk there periodically, and I enjoy every, everything.
Is it now your favorite McDonald's?
It is my favorite McDonald's. It does not look like a McDonald's, and the food tastes better.
Do they deliver?
I'm not sure about that.
To where? To Berwick?
To Corner Point Brewing.
We're going to look into that, and we heard Papa John's will deliver pizza.
We're not going there, we're not going there, come on there, come on, don't start trouble.
No, but that's, I, I, I want to thank you personally for that picture.
Are there any other examples that you kind of always think back to as picturesque examples that you want to incorporate in there? If you see anything, or--
No, I think, I like the pictures of the not recommended.
Yeah, and I recognize some of those.
You know what's funny is I have a, like, a, a feeling when I look at those buildings, like, I literally cringe a little bit, like--
Did you go, want to take pictures intentionally of these, especially the ones that--
No, I took Lee J., like, Lee J.'s booklet had good pictures in there, but they were just, they weren't very, they weren't good quality. And I just tried to, I would Google, just kind of Google image search, likes, like, little, like the bullet points, and see what, what would come up, and sometimes it worked. And I also, we borrowed a lot from the other design guidelines, like Kittery, North Wyndham.
Here's just a thought. Why don't we run this by somebody who's a potential developer and see what they, you know, does it, is it understandable to them? I mean, I don't think it delays what we're doing tonight. You know, we're doing this on the assumption that it's going to be helpful to people developing. Let's ask one.
Sure.
Or two, if we can, you know.
But these are being adopted as a reference document.
I understand that, but we want to make sure that the person who's going to be using them understands them the way that we want, you know, that we're intending them to be understood. You know, I just find it useful to--
This was like land use with pictures, and I think we can amend it.
No, I, I mean, I find it useful to--
We're going to learn a lot--
We're looking to vote on this in November, right?
No, no, we don't need to vote on this.
I don't think, do we?
We're not going to vote on this?
I thought these were guidelines, so they don't have to be voted on.
They probably should be voted on.
But what are they going to be part of?
They're, they're referred to in the land use ordinance.
Are they part of the, are they like an annex or a penance?
Yeah, exactly, they're like an, an annex, a supplement, whatever.
But the, the words have all been changed from "shall" to "should," right?
Right, the guidelines.
Yeah, so I, I, that's my assumption that this is not going to the town for vote.
Kind of like what the subdivision regs used to be, like, living document, but you didn't even have--
Well, no, but, because we always thought that the subdivision regs were law.
Yeah, 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 okay, different then. I just meant the sense that you can change them.
This is meant to be a helpful document.
Right.
And, you know, and I still think it, the legal status is, does it fit into the neighborhood? But the actual guidelines themselves, I, I messaged what they are, it's just like, this is what we think. You know, this is, these are what our goals are, but if you've got another way to get there, knock yourself out.
Yeah, when you look at form-based code, it becomes really difficult to cover everything. But I think if you have pictures, you kind of set the stage and, you know, the guidelines.
It's also my sense that, you know, unlike some towns, I mean, I don't think we want to be overly rigid and say, you know, you must have shutters, shutters that are pale blue and three inches, you know. That, that doesn't seem to me to be the character of Berwick, but I could--
You can, you can become more specific further down the road, you know, if we choose to be.
A lot of this is just that, you know, and, and even the, the, the ordinance change on, on odors, I've got to think over the years that's going to be reworked, because it's just, it's a little, you know, it's hard to spell out what we really want, but I think it's a very good beginning, but, you know, and I think the same with these guidelines. As we work with them, we'll get an idea.
I've read the odor control, and that's a tough one. It, it does pass for initial, for an initial try, the smell test, so.
Good, good choice of words.
But I'll tell you, it's, you know, until we get like a sound meter, we have a smell meter.
And, 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 right, we just don't.
So that's pretty, pretty straightforward. I might try to find some more pictures, maybe for lighting or whatever, but that's the gist of it. Maybe next meeting, you guys adopt it, and we ask, ask Lee J., you know.
Excellent.
Okay, that's, that's--
There was one, then parking in there again, do we need that? Or is that just for reference to lighting?
Or does it come up again? Yeah, we need to be real careful what we say about parking--
Well, this is for, this is for lighting.
Contradict what we have in land use.
Yeah, this is in reference to lighting, parking area lighting. So it's more along the lines of just lighting, not necessarily parking, so.
So with the sidewalk plan, there's a little preface about complete streets. Communities in Maine, Portland, Scarborough, New Hampshire, Dover, Portsmouth, they've adopted some form of complete street policy. Complete streets accommodate all modes of transportation, transportation, including walking, biking, public transit, and driving.
I noticed skateboards aren't listed.
E-scooters. I'll add that, to be continued. The streets are designed to balance safety and convenience for all ages.
Actually, quite seriously, you know what, when I wish you would add?
Yep.
Wheelchairs.
Okay, yep, absolutely.
We should definitely consider that as--
To make sure that--
And keep that in mind, as we're doing all these things.
Absolutely.
They are handicapped accessible.
You'll see there's more, there's a little, there's a page on ADA accessibility. But I agree, in this section, wheelchairs should always be accounted for. There's an economic benefit, green dividend for basically money not spent driving, can be spent in local economy. There's obvious health benefits. Complete streets that are designed as complete streets from the beginning are more, they're safe.
Another benefit you might want to add in there is the social benefit. And when you're out walking, you're more likely to run into your neighbors than if you're sitting in your car. And that's always a good thing.
That's a great point.
With some exceptions.
There's a couple, a couple of times in there, reference the comp plan, reference division plan, in the 1991 comp plan. Require any subdivision approved with both public water and sewer have sidewalks. Develop a 10-year renovation and new sidewalk schedule integrated with major sewer water and stormwater projects on town roads. Walkability is, was one of the bigger themes throughout the vision report. So I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with this data. Forty-five percent of our sidewalks are in poor condition. Thirty-one percent are good, or thirty-one percent are okay. Fourteen percent are good. A lot of the cases, there isn't a curb, or it's in poor condition. Barely half of our sidewalks are ADA compliant, meaning, there's one stretch in Berwick where the sidewalk never ends, so there's no way to get off. Sometimes there's a crack right in the middle.
You should change "okay" to like "fair" or something like that.
Okay, it's fair.
Fair condition, you know, you also have good, poor, fair condition. Instead of good, poor, and okay condition.
Right.
They're okay, maybe different than my okay.
Okay. Deal. This dress is put on going to concrete. I think the concrete, where feasible, it's ideal, because I think we're all trying to build something for the long run, while it's more expensive, it lasts much longer. Obviously, there will be some stretches in town where it just makes sense to patch with asphalt, just because the value of-- The sidewalks become more valuable as they're connected into a, a network.
Considered anything for, just say, the perimeter and internal to the prime planning area to be brick? To require that to be brick?
Yeah, it's possible, but the question is how, how friendly is brick with like a wheelchair? And it's do, I mean, I think it is doable, you can do brick, that's pretty smooth. But I think of brick, like old port brick, but that might not be-- But that might not be the--
I think if you have a lot of old--
Brick would be really nice.
I think if you have a lot of old existing sidewalks, like you can go, Oport, you can go to Annapolis. They have tree roots growing right through the sidewalks and you have to, if you're in a wheelchair, you're gonna have to go over that root. You know, so somehow or other, they're getting away with it.
Well, a lot of times those crosswalks too, that, that's actually, uh, concrete that's stamped and colored to look like brick.
Yeah, Durham does stamped asphalt. They stamp the asphalt and then paint it.
Or concrete.
No, they stamp the asphalt.
Stamp the asphalt?
Yep.
I'd be a, that's what I'd like to see for our crosswalks.
Yeah.
Like in Concord, Concord has stamped, painted crosswalks, they're really nice.
Jealous of their crosswalks?
Yeah, it's, it's super nice. We were.
John gets all the nice stuff, doesn't he?
Well, he's in Kenny Buck now.
Thank you for tracking him.
Yeah, we were, uh, we were at, um, a wedding and we lost, Lindsay and I lost the keys to her car. So we were stuck in Concord the entire day and it was, it was awesome. They had, they had like.
Don't say anything bad, I grew up there.
It's a good time, Slime. Lose your keys, you'll enjoy the day.
Yeah. Yeah, lo, lo, lose your keys in Berwick.
The, the hotel we were staying at just happened to be right outside of the, uh, end of the five, five K race. So this is, um, let's see if I can zoom in. Here we go. This is one of the, probably the top priorities is the stretch of Sullivan where, um, the left, it's just uneven. No curb. In the middle, there's no, there's no, there's nothing. And then again, there's no curb. And this would get you to the town hall from the, sometimes the bus stop or the, the four-way stop.
Yeah, that, that middle section seems like it should just be, uh, it just seems like something the town should do, which should just be a little brainer to do that section. But then again, of course, where's the underground, where's the drainage and what's there for drainage right now?
There should be sewers there.
Um, the segment on the left is going to Memorial Field. It would probably make sense to widen that a little bit to at least six feet. And then picture on the right, um, I think Lee J would tell you that you could, you could probably try to entice Mark to do the entire stretch if you could, um, I guess, convince him, or I guess you could condition him on doing the entire, entire stretch. I don't know, but.
All the way up, all the way up Rochester Street to Ball Field?
Wilson, Wilson, that's, I mean, I mean, to the, under the right is Rochester Wilson Street.
That's Wilson? That's Wilson?
Yeah.
That's the entrance to the police station.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, 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 that's the empty parking lot, okay. I was thinking that was Rochester Street.
Yeah. But at the, at the very least, half of it will be his responsibility, cause that's right in front of the property.
Yeah, and is there even a sidewalk on the opposite side of those?
No.
Nope, nope, there's nothing, there's nothing. And, uh.
There, there's probably gonna be a crosswalk there anyway, I would think, entering the prime planning property.
A crosswalk, oh, yeah. He'll, he'll wanna make that as fluid, connected as possible.
Yeah, you wanna make that really accessible.
I think, when I was walking this with John, back in the day now, it was really apparent, having street trees to separate would make it really nice and really walkable.
Yeah, there, there's absolutely nothing to stop a car from running over you. Nothing.
Uh, on the left is right in front of the town hall, and on the right is in front of Subway, obviously not ADA compatible. The question would be, do we patch that or do we replace with concrete? I would almost suggest, uh, go with concrete. Might as well do it and get it right, cause it's right there. That's Bow Street, um.
Probably have to put a little tactile pads at the tip down for the, if you wanna make it ADA compliant.
Right.
Put those in. And then you have to make sure that the Public Works doesn't plow them up with a big plow.
Yep, there's.
There's a lot of things that go into it.
Yeah, there needs to be a lot of coordination with Public Works as we're putting more infrastructure on that.
Is that John's shadow?
It's either mine or his.
Bad, bad photography technique right there.
I know, are you trying?
Well, we took sixty pic, sixty segments, so. Um, Bow Street and like coming across from the bridge with things that are happening at One Sullivan, we'll wanna make that safe as possible. Especially if people have a few beers. So a sidewalk or a stroller is gonna hit that and immediately go ninety degrees. The sidewalk never ends. Um, I think, I don't know if this has been fixed, I don't know if the sidewalk is like this anymore, but it was bad and.
That looks like a patch drop that Berwick did on top of an old sidewalk.
Sounds like an overlay.
Yeah, an overlay.
So do the existing pedestrian use functionality, connectivity and future uses, the following segments of sidewalks have been identified as high priority. Um, two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five CF sidewalks, uh, at sixty dollars a millennial foot and that, that price, um, have a email out to Robert to see if that's reasonable. That's, um, one hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred. This is the, segment one was covered earlier, segment two and three in front of Town Hall and Subway, also those pictures are covered earlier. Segment four, going from the bridge to Great Falls Park along, uh, Sawmill up to Moulton. Which, uh, Steve, our town manager's, um, pushing hard to make, make happen in conjunction with the asphalt work and. Um, the bridge along to Bow Street, so that's the One Sullivan consideration. And then connecting another segment from the four-way stop to seventy-one Sullivan Street. So that co, that connects Memorial Field to Estbrook, it connects everyone's Sullivan and Memorial Field to the downtown. Secondary priority, um, did this again, of course.
Too fast, man.
There's an existing segment on Pine Hill Road and it just get, another six hundred feet connects you up to, up to Pine Hill Road. Anyways, let's see, um, Logan to. So I was driving today and, and saw that there was already a sidewalk from Logan to Dobson, it's just a little thin stretch. It'd make sense to widen that a bit. Now, the question, question is, is there value of being able to walk to the Berwick walk-in? From the downtown and, and connecting it in?
Eventually, uh, sure there is. I mean, the sidewalk comes over School Street and you can see the building from there.
Eventually, sure.
Yeah, cause, well, it ends right at Olpine Hill and School.
Yeah. I think Olpine Hill, to me, would be an important priority, especially with the medical building there, the library there and over the hill down School Street.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Also, if you go.
With new developments, new people living in there.
Yeah, yeah.
There's, um, connecting Bell, Goodwin, Jordan, Rochester Street, there's all of that interconnectedness from Memorial Field and all that density there. They're connected to Rochester Street or through Jordan Street.
But the, uh, that section, right, the, uh, Jordan Street, most places, you know, the, between the Ball Field and Rochester Street, I mean, there, that's a pretty dense area. But I think it's a safe walk-in area, the way it's, the traffic is patterned right now.
That's kinda what I felt about Jordan Street.
You know, like, a, a lot of times, I remember people saying a long time ago that they didn't want sidewalks so the kids could ride their bikes in the street. You know, they didn't want curvings.
Okay.
Um, and if you have a safe neighborhood, um, I mean, you can go to a lot of places and, you know, people don't want the hard curb sidewalks, they want, you know, cul-de-sac, cri, crypt example, display in the cul-de-sacs.
Good point. Could reach out to that.
Some of those areas, I don't know, we should probably poll people in those neighborhoods and say, do you want sidewalks here or not?
Sounds good. And then connecting that little loop from Sawmill Hill to Allen Street. And then the sidewalks on Allen Street. And then from really it would be not from Dobson to Pine Hill Road, but it'd be from School, Olpine Hill Road. Oh, wait, that's right, nevermind, sorry. So from, if you went up Dobson and then you just connected the segment from there to the pub, public library, that might be the more realistic way to get from the downtown to the library.
So take Dobson?
I don't want people walking down my street. Yeah, but you're right, that is, because most people do that shortcut anyway. They don't walk all the way up School Street and then make a left, they go up Dobson.
Well, they, they can send them down the Penny Pond Trail, let's see it.
Yeah, right.
Get eaten alive.
So that.
Put a box in front of your house for public comments to be left.
Keep an iPad on there. Uh, and then the seg, the others, the next segment down is to the library, but you can see it's double the sidewalks needed. And then future considerations, just based off of use and mostly it's just the cost, so you're looking at five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
I don't understand why you put Berwick Road to Huzzy School when ninety-nine percent, ninety-nine point nine percent of the kids that go to school there came in in a yellow bus.
Well, don't you think, don't you think there's maybe value of being able to walk from the Huzzy School for a day trip to the downtown? It's a, I think it's a mile walk. I don't know if that's realistic or.
You know, I, well, it's not, today, I don't think that's gonna happen.
So we're, we're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars for a day trip.
Well, so.
We could send them to Paris for two hundred thousand dollars for a day trip.
But also, but also if you, you do Berwick Road, you're connecting to the Grayworks Regional Land Trust parcel as well. And you can either do Berwick Road to Huzzy, Huzzy, or you can go down two thirty-six to Huzzy. Either, either way, also there's, there's funding, grants and stuff if you're building sidewalks to schools.
How about to, uh, post offices? Cause people do walk to the post office in downtown and I know.
Well, but we don't, we don't know where the post office is gonna be.
Should be here or there from that.
Well, that's, that's, that's another point. We, you don't know where it's gonna be. And it should be nice to have it downtown. It would save us a lot of money on building a sidewalk from downtown to the existing ones.
This is my really beautiful map.
And the contract is up this year, I think.
By the way, I know we've been about to talk.
And we, we'll either hand this off to SMPDC or John Stoll Consulting to make this a more professional looking map. Um, so let me use my, the blue is already existing. Good or okay sidewalks. There might be a couple of segments missing, like, but this really isn't like, okay, it's, it's just there, it's like these sidewalks, um. Any, um, ideas?
There's a sidewalk that, that sidewalk continues past Dobson and it goes to Olpine Hill, but you have it as green.
Yep. Right, right.
Yeah, it ends right there.
Should be more than existing.
It ends at Olpine Hill.
Future consideration, you mean?
No, it continues.
Right.
Past Dobson up all the way, follow up.
Like this, this stretch, this stretch already exists, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but you have it as green.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. Which makes this to here pretty, pretty feasible.
And also.
You have to decide what, what side of the road you want it on though. Where you want people crossing. To get to, if they're gonna get to the pharmacy, where you want them to cross? Do you wanna cross at Olpine Hill? Is it safer there or is it safer to cross down by the pharmacy?
Good question.
You're at an intersection at Olpine Hill, you've already got cars slowing down, stopping. That may be the safest place for people to cross.
Good point. This could be worked on a little bit. Um, I think the M U F thing is we'll work on getting that flushed, flushed out a bit where if a developer had three hundred feet of frontage, three hundred feet at sixty dollars a millennial foot, we'll work on that price. You have exact that amount for, you know, segment one. Or segment, go down the list until we have our sidewalk.
How about we, we've briefly spoken about using the impact fees to help the sidewalk building program. Is that gonna be something we're gonna look into or the town, the select is gonna look into?
It's really difficult to do impact fees for infrastructure. Unless we, we'd have to check to see if we can consider sidewalks as recreation.
Lane that first sentence.
Water and sewer is infrastructure. We're gonna charge impact fees for water and sewer.
We charge impact fees for recreation and open space.
We don't have impact fees on new construction for water and sewer connections?
Well, those are, those, those.
Those are separate charges.
Sewer, sewer charges an impact fee.
Okay.
And then water has some sort of establishment cost.
Water department charges, you know, by default, if you, they're running in front of your house, I think you, you have to to pay something. The sewer district does the same with their frontage.
But the impact fees we collect are recreation and open space.
But th, does it have to be that way? Why couldn't it be?
Well, no, it could be, it, you could.
To me, an impact fee is because your development is impacting the cost of the town, I mean, the town's infrastructure.
There possibly, there possibly could be a scenario where we get rid of the open space component.
For some of it.
Move it all to recreation and then if we, we consider sidewalks as part of recreation, that's one path I see.
Stretch.
It is a stretch, but what if we defined sidewalks as a recreational opportunity in the master plan that they're developing? We might have something. It's possible, but.
When, when across the street, we did that routine about comparing the new, the additional value and then just putting that in a separate fund, what's that called?
Is that the TIF?
The TIF, yes. Can we use the TIF for any of this?
Absolutely.
But only if you're in a certain area that the TIF has been designated for.
Well, but a, a lot of this is gonna be the downtown area. Yeah, and I don't remember the exact contours, but doesn't the TIF go beyond just the overlay district?
It pretty much is the overlay district.
Yeah, but only, yeah, but only if.
I think, like, didn't we go to the Estbrook School?
No.
No, we did not in, in the TIF.
No, you can go outside the boundaries according to the one-on-ones that we have.
Well, you can create, we can create a new one.
Create another one.
Yeah, you can create another one, but if you can show that the state of Maine actually monitors how you're doing your, your monetary things in the TIF. And if you can show that the off-site improvement
Right.
has an impact on the development itself, then you can do that.
And Estbrook School is in the, is in the Village District.
Yeah.
This is just the, uh.
So what's the next step with this?
I think the next step is formalizing.
So what's the grand total of all of the different priorities? Did you figure that out?
It's like a million.
Yes.
Oh, several million, I think.
No, it's a million.
It's about a million.
It's one million?
It's a million.
Wow, nice.
That's assuming sixty dollars of, of lineal foot. Also, my methods of, of calculating the length, I used a ruler at first.
He scaled it.
Use a ruler with, with like Google Maps and then I use their GIS maps, which actually has a tool that you can.
Yeah, you plot in, so it's give or take like twenty-five feet every time you measure it.
About you and John went out there with a tape measure.
Yeah.
Twenty-five foot.
That's the next.
You do that in millimeters or in, uh, inches?
Now, the existing sidewalks, is that, is repair of those in Public Works budget somewhere?
They have money every year for that, for slight problems.
Yeah.
But it's not, you know, it's never been enough, so.
Yeah.
And then also with that pricing, that would be for swapping out the pave, um, the asphalt for the concrete over by Subway. That, your figures?
This, that, that price is just all concrete, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, no asphalt.
Right.
So that's assuming that everything gets converted.
You're like, you're talking about doing concrete beyond the town center?
Um, actually, I mean, no, I think, that's a good point, I mean, that's a good point.
I, I would think that. I think the only area that would really need concrete is the town center.
The downtown.
Hardware areas.
You know, the town, the town center areas, because you're gonna start getting into sidewalks further out and they're just gonna start dropping salt on them. And concrete and salt do not mix. And concrete and salt do not mix at all.
Does it impact asphalt?
Not the way it impacts concrete. It will eat concrete. UNH uses a ton of salt and we are constantly repairing concrete steps in sidewalks.
They can't mix concrete that's, uh, because you can mix concrete for saltwater, I thought.
You can put additives in concrete that will help, but over time, a concrete sidewalk is gonna deteriorate faster than asphalt because of salt use.
That's a good point though. No, that needs to be...
Yeah, I think once you're beyond the, you know, the village overlay area, then you go back to asphalt.
Yeah, so once you have a sidewalk, sidewalk plan like this, um, and it's implemented and we, we're gonna fund it a couple of different ways. Either through regular taxes, like I think the sidewalk fix-it projects now, fund it that way and then, uh, TIF for, you know, whatever. Uh, then the selectmen are the ones that will, for a given year, will, you know, when they do their budget, they're gonna say, we're gonna do Olpine Hill Road now. We're gonna do that road next and according to this plan.
Isn't there a time limit on when you have to spend the impact fee money that you bring in?
That's for impact fees, but the, the main reason for doing this was the AMUVO program.
So, so there's no timeline?
That's what Lee J said last meeting.
Okay.
It's five years for the impact fees, I believe.
But if we do this, we can collect money and if the, the project is in priority fifteen area, it doesn't matter that it may not get built for fifteen, for twenty or twenty-five years it took him.
Does it, does it, does it either say there's a development that happens, um, I don't know, say, it's right here. You can either, you can either, like, take the money from here and put it here and it has to be direct nexus, which means the plan is that we're gonna have a sidewalk here, you know, eventually. Or you hold the money until, and then we, we build up these sidewalks and then once it's appropriate, you would spend those funds and we, we would build it with that money here.
I'm assuming once we put a, a plan into effect, then we have the nexus covered.
I think, I, I think so.
Should be relevant.
I think so. That's my, that's my...
And that has to go to a town vote, I'm assuming, to put the plan together or not?
I, I would say we adopt this into our town's comprehensive plan, so yes.
So, but that doesn't solve any of the problems of, of the, the schedule of when to do it, uh, who pays for it. Doesn't solve, it just says that this is what the town should have.
Well, the who pays for it...
And that has to be adopted by the townspeople.
Is over time, this pays for it, but you're right.
Yeah.
I don't know how long it's gonna take to get, to get a million dollars in the INLU program. It could take years and years and years for that to happen. I mean, is the idea not to build it until the money is there?
You buil- I mean, you build it as though, I think you build it...
Build it as the money comes in.
You build it until you have enough money to pay for segment one.
You might use half the money from a developer. You might use half the money from the town.
Yeah, and that's gonna be done by the selectmen on a year basis.
Whatever sixty times two hundred is.
One point two million. What, sixty times what?
Sixty times two hundred.
Sixty times two hundred, one hundred and twenty?
No, one hundred and twenty thousand, right?
No, not one hundred and twenty.
Zero times two hundred, three zeros.
A billion, billion.
Or twelve?
Peanuts.
One point two billion, billion?
No, 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 one point two billion. Thirteen, thirteen thousand. So, so you get thirteen thousand dollars, whatever way, it just goes to segment one. You just, you know, that segment two is two hundred feet, that's, you know, thirteen thousand and then, you know, build the way you can.
Okay.
Beautiful. Thank you.
So when would this be, uh, an update to the con- comprehensive plan and when would some kind of a, um, I'm not sure how the select would treat this, how to fund it?
You still don't have the, the right amounts that you're looking for, right?
Yeah, it needs to be...
Is this, is this not, this is not gonna be ready for November?
No, it'll be...
This is another next spring thing?
Next spring, yeah. June. It'll be a June.
So you gotta talk to Robert and get some amounts.
Yep. And just tight, tighten it up. Tighten up the numbers, the existing sidewalks, maybe including the side of the street. Get some more pictures.
Yeah.
Maybe figure out where the tar should go versus where the concrete should go.
Exactly.
There's, there's a lot of decisions that...
And we should talk more about how, how valuable it would be to do, to connect the Huzzy School to the downtown. If people would actually use it.
I mean, it's like priority fifteen or sixteen on your list, so we, we got a while to work.
Okay, so, so the last.
We got some time to talk about this.
Going back?
Why not?
Nailed it.
So it goes back to the old days?
Nope.
Let's go to your chair. It's just too close.
Doesn't matter.
Now we got an extra.
All right, anything else before we wanna leave tonight?
I just wonder, when will the proposed amendments be posted online, James, do you know? Or are they already up?
Um, I'll Monday or Tuesday.
Okay. So anybody interested in coming to the public hearing on the sixteenth of August? The proposed amendments will be online early next week. Please review them and come do your civic duty and give us your comments two weeks from tonight.
Absolutely.
And then next Tuesday, Dave, you're gonna...
I will be there.
Would you like to have, would, would you feel better if there were other?
Sure, it doesn't, yeah, if you'd like to come.
I'll be there.
Okay.
We'll clap.
Anything else?
Um, I wanna bring up something that we just barely touched, but with, uh, the Great Falls Park, um, we have a little committee that's working on the Great Falls Park, which is at the corner of, uh, Sawmill Hill and Molton Street, um, overlooking the river and the, and the dam and, um, all that stuff. Um, and there's been some MS four stormwater work being done, um, along Molton Street and it's, apparently it's, that's moving along pretty well. And on, um, I believe it's the fifteenth of this month, there is, uh, it's gonna be on Facebook and on the town's website. Uh, Great Falls Park will have an open house at the House of Hope.
Yeah, it's already there, yeah.
Yep, and, uh, and I, you know, it's, it'd be nice if we got a nice turnout to, to see what's gonna happen there. And I think that'll be a, a fantastic addition, you know, to the town's recreation.
It was August eighteenth.
August eighteenth?
You're close.
I have something else on the fifteenth. I'm getting old, James, and I, I get confused. Um, but I knew it was coming up in, uh, two weeks. So anyways, so people should watch out for that and if they're around town that day, come in.
All right, anybody else? Excedent on the agenda, the adjournment?
Need for me.
I move to adjourn the, um, Thursday, August second, two thousand eighteen, uh, planning board meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Well done.